...by our own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the rent surtrary to the specific decisions of the Historic Zoning Commission. Approval of the minutes of January 18th?
I did have one correction for you. Commissioner Bell noted that there was an incorrect name, and so that's been corrected since this printed copy that you received. Just wanted to let you know that.
On the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that has been made. All right.
Move approval with corrections.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of the January 18th. These are approved. The consent agenda will be presented as a list of items that have been submitted to be voted on in one motion. That motion will be made one time, and the public meeting will be closed for those items. We will read those items. If there are any items on the consent agenda that you would like to withdraw and have the presentation, please indicate by raising your hand, and we'll pull that off the consent agenda. In that, I will ask if you would like to read the consent agenda.
I would like to very much. All right. 809 Russell Street is an application for new construction of an addition and also an accessory structure with a rear setback reduction. The accessory structure is over 700 square feet, and as such, the typical rear setback would be 20 feet. But as most historic structures, we're typically a little bit closer to the alley. We ask for 10 feet generally, and so we're okay with 10 feet on this larger accessory structure. 3630 Richland Avenue is also an application for an addition and an accessory structure with, again, a rear setback reduction from 20 to 10 feet at the rear. Very similar. And 1206 Woodland Avenue is an application for new construction, which would be an addition to an existing accessory structure. Currently, there is a 36 by 30 garage on the site. It's quite a tall garage. It's a modern. It was built a little tall for one story to accommodate what happened on the interior. The new owners are hoping to add a second level. There will only be a net gain of three feet in the structure, even with adding the upper story. Staff feels that all projects meet the design guidelines for their respective districts, and as such recommends their approval as a group.
I don't see anyone that wants to pull any of those three items off the consent agenda, therefore I ask that the public hearing be closed. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. We'll proceed with new business. 2216 White Avenue.
The first case on new business, 2216 White Avenue. This is a clavoured-sided Queen Anne Cottage, constructed circa 1904. It is a contributing structure in the Woodland and Waverly Preservation District. The applicant is proposing to construct a rear addition to the upper story of the structure. The footprint of the structure would not be changed. The addition will be composed of two dormers, in essence, a side-facing shed dormer behind an existing left gable projection, and a rear-facing gable behind the main hip roof. The materials of both elements would be cement-fiber clavoured siding, asphalt shingle roof, wood trim, wood windows. The materials are appropriate compatible with the historic house and appropriate, meaning the design guidelines. The side-facing dormer, the shed dormer, would be stacked directly above the first-story wall, which is itself set back two feet from that projecting left gable, the wall of the left gable. And the dormer would be only minimally visible from the right-of-way, if at all, and it does not impair the integrity or form of the original structure. Staff finds this dormer meets the design guidelines. The rear-facing gable dormer, obviously, would be on the rear slope of the original hip roof. And point out that according to the design guidelines, additions should not disturb side facades and should be constructed in a manner that preserves the original form of a structure. For these reasons, commission has typically required that additions be inset from historic houses so that they don't interfere with the existing sidewalls, rear corners, or ridge lines of historic roof. In this case, at the top of the gable, the amount that the new roof would set in from the original roof would be about a foot, but it has a slightly lower roof pitch so that that inset diminishes as it approaches the bottom. Staff finds that the minimal offset would impair the integrity of the original structure and inappropriately disturb the original roof configuration, which does not meet guidelines 2B1A, 3B1A, and 3B1D, which relate to roof forms of original structures and roof forms of additions. Staff is recommending approval of the rear and shed dormers with the condition that the rear-facing gables set in the existing hip ridge by a minimum of one foot. And with that condition, staff finds that the addition does meet the design guidelines for the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Overlay. And I'll just go one more slide before I finish, just to show that these are, it's a sketch-up model, not exactly to scale perhaps, but it's certainly a good representation of what the structure would look like. But I'll leave on the, oops, went too far. Leave on that. That's a--
Questions? Is there anyone here that would like to make a presentation?
I believe the applicant is here.
Could you give your name and address?
Sure. My name is John Root. I'm the architect for the project on behalf of the applicant, Todd and Ashley Grooms. I guess I should note that the 3D sketch-up that you just saw didn't reflect the revision that I worked with staff on to change the pitch from 1212 to 1012. I feel like that exposes the hip line, the existing hip line that maintains the integrity of the roof form. What I'm trying to do is prevent an adverse roof condition by setting that roof back off of it. It would create a valley, and I'm trying to line that up to prevent that situation. So that's the only comment I have. I'll field any questions you may have. Thank you.
John, in looking at the elevation drawing at the rear--
Yes.
--having, and certainly I think I understand, in looking at the various models and sort of looking at the rear elevation, which would be the east, yeah, A1, the east elevation. I'm just, I think in drawing, that certainly distinguishes those. I'm just curious that in practice, that's quite a tricky little transition, I guess, to make there in detail, kind of a little, somewhat of a little swag there in asphalt shingles. It seems that either, I think less would be to even it up, which I think is what the original sketch-up model illustrated, and I think we're running afoul of distinguishing old from new there. And I wonder if this goes far enough to do that. And just going 1012, it seems like such a minor thing almost even could be viewed as, you know, what's going on there? More of a mistake, I guess, than an intentional way to do that. But I'd certainly sympathize with keeping water out. I mean, we always want to do that.
I mean, my preference would be to carry the 1212 roof back--
Right.
--create a consistent roof form. But I think the, I spoke with staff about maybe an 812 or something of that nature, but it still raised the question about the setback off the side, which I felt like the intent of the guidelines were to set the actual physical sidewalls back, not necessarily the roof form. In the past, I've been able to carry ridge lines back and carry roofs back and keep maintaining the integrity of those roof forms. So I was trying to create, you know, obviously, I was trying to build off that existing gable.
The rear facing?
The rear-facing gable, yes. On the side.
Based on this elevation--
Based on the elevation we have on our screen, what is staff suggesting that happened to this versus what's been drawn? That you keep a foot all the way down and that the new roof would not meet at the top of the existing gable? Or what?
Well, we're hesitant to really suggest anything with it the way it is right now because it could potentially cause a leakage problem. So it may be something that just needs to be completely rethought, but in order to keep it as simple for the applicant as possible, the condition was that it just be set off the ridge by a foot.
The top ridge?
The existing ridge.
Which means that that would not run into the top of that gable? Is that what happens?
The top of the hip roof? Is that what you mean?
The side, the side gable, as you say? Looking, coming right at us.
The existing?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be off that ridge by a foot.
Be down by a foot.
Right.
Interesting detail there. Any questions for the closing of the hearing? Closing of the hearing? Any discussion?
This is, some, I mean, this is tricky because I feel like what's submitted is, I don't know, that's hard to distinguish. It, or hard to distinguish, I think in theory that moves towards separating those roof forms, but I think bringing, you know, narrowing it down into nothing causes it to be really muddy, and I'm not sure in terms of achieving the guidelines, achieving the intent of the guidelines to preserve, again, this is not a conservation district, it's a preservation district to fulfill, you know, maintaining that form, it just seems odd, really odd and awkward, I think.
I agree. I don't know if you're leaning towards it just being at the same plane as the existing gable or not, but--
I mean, if it's at the same plane, I think that gets us right back to the problem of the guidelines.
Right. I just don't know what--
John's a very capable person, I guess, to sit here and design it in process is maybe more, is not what we're charged to do. But I'm not sure either that this solution is, in seeing it built, is where we need to be going. That's the question I have about it.
And if we were to, we're going to need to come up with a suggestion for-- Compromise would be the right thing, but we do need to give them some guidance if in fact they're going to move forward.
Well, I'll move approval based on staff. I'll move approval based on staff recommendation. I mean, I think that just gets the process going, and they can, again, accept that a redesign to the gable. Otherwise, we're going to spend hours trying to redesign the gable form, so.
Second.
Any discussion? Does that give you all enough to work with the architect?
And of course, if a whole different solution is a possibility, they can still come forward with that as well.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 2114 19th Avenue.
So 2114 19th Avenue South is an application to construct new infill on a vacant lot in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. In October 2011, the commission approved the demolition of a non-contributing building on this site and approved the design of new infill. However, the design that's before you today represents a different design, a new design, and a new applicant. So this is the site plan. The application meets all of the base zoning requirements for setbacks. However, the front of the house is only set back 21 feet from the front property line. And if you look at the kind of neighborhood context and its immediate neighbors, the house to the right, which is kind of just up on the map, or south, I'm sorry, or north, is, no, I'm sorry, the house below what's marked on the map is a non-contributing house, so we're not considering that at this point. But the house just above it is a contributing house, and it's set approximately between 40 and 46 feet from the front property line. So although the other houses on the block have front setbacks that are between 20 and 46 feet, staff strongly recommends that the proposed infill match the setback of its neighboring contributing house to the north. This will help ensure that the proposed two-and-a-half-story house's scale fits within the context of the immediate neighborhood because we fear that if it was placed any closer to the front of the lot, it would look out of scale when compared to the rest of the historic context. So here's an image of the front facade. Again, the house is proposed to be two-and-a-half stories and 33 feet in height. The maximum width of the house is approximately 38 feet 2 inches, and the maximum depth is 68 feet 11 inches. Staff finds the house's proposed height and scale, as well as its relationship of open spaces, to match the historic context of its immediate surroundings. The house's primary cladding material will be cement-fiber board lap siding. Other materials include stucco over brick veneer for the foundation and front porch columns, architectural dimensional fiberglass shingles for most of the roof, standing seam metal for the porch roof, stucco for the chimneys, and wood or cement fiber board shakes for the dormer and bay accents. The windows will either be wood or aluminum clad. All of these materials have been approved by the commission in the past, and staff finds them appropriate in this instance. Here are the two side elevations. The design of this infill has no large expanses of wall space without a window or door opening, and the window proportions are appropriate for the historic context. So therefore, staff finds proportion and rhythm of openings for the infill to be appropriate. And here are just some neighborhood photos. On the upper left is the house that's neighboring to it, and that's the one that we want the front setback to match. The other ones are predominantly across the street. There is a three-door multifamily development a little bit further down the street and across the street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the application with the following conditions: the house be set back from the front property line sufficiently so that it is in line with the historic house to the left. Staff review and approve the color of the asphalt shingle and standing seam roof colors, all windows and doors, and the shape material prior to purchase and installation of these materials. The HVAC be located at the rear of the house or the side beyond the midpoint of the house. And the existing central walkway be retained or reconstructed. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and also I believe the architect and the applicant is here to address any concerns.
Do you have any questions for staff? Is there anyone here that would like to come? Presentation, permission? Yeah, can you fill out the meeting?
Yes. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects, here representing our clients at 2114 19th Avenue South. We've worked, we're excited to have an infill house on 19th. The owners already live on 19th, so they're really excited just to be moving down the street. And we've worked with staff to keep the massing and the footprint and so forth in a comfortable zone. We've gone to great pains to try to put a house on this lot that the neighborhood would also appreciate. I think the house is about 3,600 square feet, so it's not one of the sort of giant houses that have been the subject of so much scorn. We've also gone with a, it says two-and-a-half story, but the top's just a window in the attic. We really sort of think of it more as a one-and-a-half-story house, but it really is a full-two-story house, and the master is on the second floor in an effort to keep the footprint more compact. And that was done primarily to give us as much open space as we can have on our lot. Though, we set the house at what we thought was the setback we were supposed to use, and then staff wanted it back, and I can understand pushing the house back a little bit, but I don't think it's particularly fair that we are sort of beholden to the house to the left. And I've got some things here if it's appropriate. But we've spent a lot of time on the street measuring and doing all kinds of other things. But one of the things that's unusual is the house to the left of us sits on a double lot. It's not like the rest of the houses on the street sitting on narrow 50-foot lots. It sits on a double lot. Its proportions are actually a little bit different, and that Metro map doesn't really show it properly. It shows it as a square, but it really is much more rectangular in footprint. And it is, I think, a bit of an anomaly in that most of the houses on the street are within 20 to 30 feet of front yard. That house, as Melissa correctly said, is in the 40-something-foot category. We measured this morning, and it takes a lot of interpolation when you're working with this, but we measured from curb and then went back to center line of street and computed it. But we're about 44 feet on the house next door, and you can see that it definitely gets a lot closer as you go up 19th. Average setback on 19th Avenue, not including the non-conforming house that sits beside us, which will be the next one we'll be talking about, I mean, not me personally, but, you know, that house's days are numbered. It will eventually also be setting precedent. But every other house on that street, the average setback on the east side is 28 feet. And on the west side, it's a little bit bigger, and you've got houses set back a little bit farther than we did, not include the non-conforming structures there either, we're closer to 37 feet. So I think what we are hoping for is to come up with something in between. And the other thing that sort of comes into play on this particular lot also is the sidewalk stops two doors up from this. So, you know, my client lives on 19th, and they've got one of the 22-foot-deep front yards with a sidewalk. So their perception of sort of distance to their neighbors is amazingly shorter than a lot with no sidewalk and 44 feet back. So I think that has to be sort of taken into account when you're sort of, the perception of how far the house is going to appear from the street. Maybe one day there'll be a sidewalk. Metro's been fairly aggressive lately, but who knows when that'll show up. But it definitely gives a perception of a house that even sits back further than 44 feet is noted. And one of the things that's critical, I think, to my client is that front porch neighborhood, and continuing to push our house back further is a bit of a detriment. But at the same time, as you well know, on an urban lot, your backyard is fairly sacred, and we may only be talking about 10 or 15 feet here, but 10 or 15 feet in a really small urban lot in a rear yard is a lot of distance. So, you know, we don't want to sort of be splitting hairs, but to us, it's certainly about the front yard and how our house is perceived from the street, but it is even more critically about what is left of our lot as we continue to shove it back into the property. So hopefully, this little drawing here will help. And like I said, it involves some field measuring as well as some interpolation from some of the Metro maps, and we did have a survey that allowed us to sort of check some of those sort of property line versus right-of-way dimensions, so we feel like that's relatively accurate.
Do we have any going up one way or the other? Okay. Okay, this lot, the upper left-hand corner of the lot is to the right.
Yeah, that's correct.
It says actually, the upper left corner is to the left, and that's the one that we're asking match because it's one of the larger homes in this area, immediate area. As you move down the street, they do get closer, but the houses also get smaller. And this is also going up the hill, which will accentuate the height. So as he said, they've done a lot of work on the massing of the home to bring the scale of the height down, but since it is at the top, headed towards the top of the hill, we felt like it needed to match that other house so that that extra height that's unusual for that immediate context is kept down a little bit.
And I think that--
Is there another--
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Have you talked to the neighbor on your right, what they think about you being that close to the street? Do you know if there's an opinion there?
On the left or the right? On the right--
If you're facing the house to the left.
No. And I said, they're sitting on a double lot. They have like a 20-foot side yard set back.
I know. I'm just curious. What are you asking us to do?
Well, we just feel like there needs to be some compromise. I think pushing us all the way back--
Besides us just arbitrarily throwing a number out, is there a number that you want us to consider, or?
We would like to be 30 feet.
Okay.
We think 30 feet is greater than the average and maintains the rhythm of the street that we would like to see as opposed to this sort of anomaly created by this particular house.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? If you'll come forward, give your name and address, please.
I'm Brett Sheriff, and my wife Jenkins and I currently live at 2008 19th Avenue South. And of course, we're building at 2114 19th Avenue. And thank you very much for having us, first of all. I just wanted to reiterate one point of Michael's and then also add a point, if you don't mind. You know, living at 2008 19th Avenue South, we're 22 feet back from the curb, if I'm not mistaken. And two advantages there in a front porch neighborhood is our ability to sit on our front porch and converse with folks that are walking on the sidewalk, but then also be within, let's call it shouting distance, of our neighbors across the street, which is pretty great. And then the second thing would be that we do have a seven-year-old son with lots of friends, and so that backyard space is to be valued without question, and that's what I've got for you. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Discussion?
I have a question for staff, and just, I can see and certainly respect the thought that's gone into both arguments. In looking at the figure ground of this, the applicant's information provided today, it makes sense to me that the house adjacent is on a double lot and that this more closely represents what would be considered overall context for the street. In looking at that and in looking at, again, I think we've got some isolated pictures, but how would you respond, I guess, to that as an analysis of the street as opposed to the more immediate right-next-door neighbors?
I think one thing that the double lot does is it makes it the context between that and the other house where the setback is just 42 feet, according to this, assuming that this is right. It makes it even that much longer before you even get to the rest of the context of the block. So when you're looking at the new construction, it's about 100, it's over 100 feet before you're even getting to the rest of the block and the rest of the context of the neighborhood where the houses do get smaller and do get closer to the street. And one of our primary concerns is just the height of this proposed house is just slightly taller than the house next door, and it's a lot taller than the other houses as you go further down on 19th Street away from, kind of, I guess, I'm not sure which direction, I guess that's, whatever direction that is. But because it's so much taller than a lot of the other houses that are closer to the lot, it'll just seem that much bigger and that much larger and out of scale to the neighborhood. But once it's pushed back to be in line or nearly in line with the house next door, the scale will seem more appropriate.
What is your thought on the 30-foot suggestion versus the 20?
I mean, I think we still have concerns about it being, you know, 10 feet forward will make it look that-- will make it look that much taller and that much more out of scale with the neighborhood.
I have a question as well. On this map as well, on, let's see, this also has a pretty good spread between 20-foot and 42-foot. See that, that particular example?
Right.
What height are those buildings?
I don't know what the house of the one that's set back 42 feet, the one that is next door is, I believe, 32 feet 6 inches, and that's 6 inches shorter than what's being proposed. So it's comparable, the one next door is comparable in height, just slightly smaller than the one that's proposed.
I, I guess for, my questioning is that how, you know, contextually to the neighborhood, you know, with that being, you know, set back and that, that it isn't really with keeping with the neighborhood, I question that, you know, because of not seeing the pictures off of those two houses. Does that make sense?
The two homes that are south of it, I believe, are non-contributing, so that's why we didn't, we didn't look at, at those as closely in terms of setback in height. But as you move down the street or up the street, and up on this page, those homes that get closer to the street get smaller. And so that's probably why that one to the left was built where it was to begin with, because it is a larger home, and pushing it back helps. That double lot also helps kind of give it the freedom to be a little bit bigger that this lot doesn't have, and so that's why, again, we thought this was really important to, to match that, the context next to it, to the left, in order to help keep that massing down for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And just one additional point. You can see on the picture on the upper left that there's the historic house that we keep referencing that's on the double lot, but, and then you can see just to the side of it is a much smaller house, and that's the one that is 42 feet, so it's much shorter than the one next door and the one that's proposed.
And then, but you can see just clipped out of the picture, the one next to that, which seems, again, equally as large as, as tall, again, in terms of judging height. It's not completely in frame, but I'm looking at that one and then the picture, top.
Right.
Right, for all you guys. That's a full-on two-story house within a little attic space, and, and so I guess I'm just trying to, trying to figure out here what, what is, not split hairs between what's right-next-door context and what's context of the street.
Right.
Where, the top right, where is that in relation to this lot?
I believe that's across the street.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe not directly. I think it's either directly or patty corny directly.
And across the street is much lower. Again, this side of the street is higher, which is another thing, you know, that helps accentuate the height.
Okay, when you're across the street, on the left-hand side of the street are lower and larger?
That's correct. They're lower, they're lower and smaller, and then moving up the page, they are, on the right-hand side, smaller and lower. So this is, this is kind of getting towards the highest point of this immediate area.
I guess if, if some of these, some of these homes that are 21, 22, that are further up the street, as we look at our sheet, look about the same size. There are three or four of them that look, three of them that look about the same size, but the, your rationale is that they're going downhill.
They're going downhill, and they're like one and a half-story homes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Or the comments?
What are we, what are we being asked to vote on?
Well, at, at present, I think the, the staff recommendation is, is what is before us right now.
Which is a 40-foot setback?
It, it's matching the setback of the house next door, so we didn't have an accurate measurement because of the Metro map not always being accurate, so I believe it's somewhere between 40 to 46, and the 44.5 that's on the map seems correct.
I guess my, my gut feel is that I, I think he's unfortunately located right next to a double lot with the big home, and that that's the furthest house setback anywhere on these two blocks, almost, and that, I guess I would be somewhat open to pushing it forward to the street. To what level, I'm just not totally certain.
I'll give a shot. I'll move approval with staff recommendation, with the exception that the setback be established at 32 feet from a, a curb, and reasoning being that the existing context along the street is, it's somewhere in establishing a, or mitigating between the height of the structure and the adjacent double lot and its excessive setback when viewed in the context of the entire street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with that reservation to the staff recommendation.
So this is the house at 1515 Beechwood Avenue, and it dates to the late 1940s. Although it dates the 1940s, it is not a good example of its style and is out of context with its immediate surroundings. Staff therefore believes that the building is non-contributing to the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And here is the site plan. The proposed infill and accessory structure meets all of the base zoning requirements for setbacks. The house to the east of the site is new construction that the commission approved in January 2011, so that's the, the house that's outlined in the white. The house to the west of the site faces Belmont Boulevard. With the construction of the house and the accessory structure, the lot will be about 66% open space, which is just slightly less than the other structures in the immediate context. Although the open area is slightly less than the immediate context, the fact that the building is partially one-story, which you'll see here in a second, assists with the providing appropriate massing for the context. The accessory structure on the site will be accessed, accessed from the rear alley, which is appropriate for the neighborhood. And here is an image of the proposed front facade. The commission actually approved this design for a different site on 19th Street, actually for the site that we just looked at on 19th Street, in October 2011. The new house will be one and a half stories and 33 feet tall. The house's maximum width is 39 feet 6 inches, and its depth is 74 feet, not including the seven-foot-deep front porch. Staff finds that the height and scale of the house matches its immediate context. The materials for the house include a brick foundation, wood or cement fiberboard cladding, brick accent cladding around the porch and entry, asphalt shingle, and metal awnings and dormer accents. These materials have all been approved by the commission in the past in the Belmont Hillsborough District, and staff finds them appropriate. Here are the two side elevations. The design does not contain any large expanses of wall space without a window or door opening, and the windows are proportionate to the historic character, and therefore staff finds the house's proportion and rhythm of openings to be appropriate. And here are the images of the accessory structure. The accessory structure will be approximately 607 square feet, and will have a maximum height of 28 feet. The materials for the structure will match those of the house, and the structure will be subordinate in scale, height, and design to the historic house. And then here are some context photos. On the upper left, the house to the right on the upper left photo is the new construction house that was approved by the commission last year in 2011. The, below that, on the lower left, is the house that faces Belmont Boulevard, so that's the house just to the right of it. And the other two pictures on the right are images of, no, I'm sorry, the house in the lower right, or the houses in the lower right are images from across the street, and on the upper right are houses further down. You can see in the very right of that picture is the new construction that was approved last year by the commission. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant for this project is here as well.
Any questions of staff? All right, this item is open for public hearings. Anyone here that would like to address the commission, come forward, give your name and address? Any comments?
Actually, I forgot to summarize that staff recommends approval with conditions about approving final materials and the location of the HVAC unit.
All right. All right. No one coming forward? We'll close the public hearing, open discussion.
Move approval of staff recommendations.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, 702 Shelby Avenue.
This next case, 702 Shelby Avenue, is currently a vacant lot. The surrounding context is composed primarily of one-and-a-half-story craftsman houses. There are a few non-contributing houses as well. The structure, the proposed new structure will be 26-foot-tall side-gabled house with a gabled front porch and front dormer. The house would be 35 feet wide across the front. These proportions are compatible with historic houses nearby, and the scale is appropriate under the design guidelines. The material, materials of the new house will be cement fiber, clevered siding, and stucco panels resembling half-timbering, split face concrete block foundation, asphalt architectural roof shingles, windows and doors will be wood. These materials meet the design guidelines. Staff is recommending approval of the infill construction with the condition that staff review and approve final details, including roof color, design of any appurtenances, including fences, paving, sidewalks, but the, that the application otherwise meets the Edgefield Historic Preservation zoning design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
The applicant is here.
Okay. This item is open for public hearing. If you'd like to come forward, okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open for discussion.
Move approval based on staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. 1006, 1008, and 1012 Fatherland.
This project is for a... This project is for a collection of small commercial buildings intended to be in place for a short period of time, like around a 20-year period, thus allowing for further development of the lot at a later date, if, if that's something that is desired. There are three buildings along the front, along Fatherland, that, which is where staff spent most of their time, as most of those interior buildings will not be as visible from the street. It's great that we actually have a model. I don't know how well you can see it, and we'll show you a little bit better when the applicant comes forward. But you can see there's three, excuse me, two there along Fatherland, and then two open pavilions towards the back, and then smaller buildings in the middle. This is somewhat similar to a project that you reviewed maybe a year ago on Woodland Street, but with more permanent structures on the street side. The inspiration for the, one of, two of the buildings is this historic building that's right on the corner and to the left of the development. It's really the only historic building in the immediate vicinity, right, right immediately around it. Again, those interior buildings are minimally visible. On the bottom, you see the street right is on the right, and the left is on the left, and up above you see two buildings and a taller two-story, and the historic building on the corner. The height is appropriate as they're all one- and two-story buildings, which is, you can see, matches, most of them match that historic building to the left, and you can see some of the context in the pictures down below show that the residential that's not in the immediate area, but on the outskirts of this area is one and a half stories, and then some of the churches and schools right around are much taller. So these heights are very appropriate for the area, and the widths are similar to the historic building as well. This is a little more context. This is looking at, from the, the back corner of the development. You can see the back of the historic property on the right, and then you can see churches, school building up above. You can also see the parking area there. The setbacks also meet bulk zoning and the historic context. This is Building A1, which is the two-story building that will face Fatherland, but all the materials for all the buildings are appropriate: concrete slabs or concrete piers, hardy panel and galvanized metal cladding and hardy plank trim, aluminum windows and doors, storefront doors, steel doors, and awnings, galvanized metal, and TPO roofing in areas where it really won't be seen that well, painted blocks, steel gates, concrete pavers, and faux-stone retaining walls. All these are materials that you've approved in the past and are seen in the district. This is Building B, which will face Fatherland Street, but most of the buildings have a shed roof. Buildings B and C have a almost-flat roof with a parapet wall, and then, of course, the pavilions in the back will be gabled. These are all roof forms that are seen historically in the district. This is one of the interior buildings that'll be somewhat semi-permanent, and all the buildings are appropriate, especially those that face Fatherland, in terms of the rhythm of openings, and on Fatherland you have those traditional storefronts as well. The only thing that we have really asked for is a panel below the windows on the A building that's going to face Fatherland, so that it reads more like a bulkhead, and they have agreed to that. There is some lighting and, I'm assuming, some signage, which they don't have all the details on yet, so staff recommends approval with the condition that the final design of windows and doors, roof color, lighting and signage, and the bulkhead on A1 be approved by staff. And they are here to tell you a little bit more about the project and explain the model for you.
Robin, just real quickly, the pilaster, I think it's noted on the drawings, pilaster detail to follow. Looks like there's an indication of masonry there, or is that a...
And I'll let them explain that a little bit more, but on the historic building, you see a mix of brick and tile, and so they wanted to pick up, not copy that feature, but pick up that element to, to sort, not, again, not match, but to, inspired by that element, and I'll let them explain the details of it.
I'll listen. All right, thanks.
Heather. I'm Brett McFadyen. I have a business at 1106 Woodland Street, so it's actually in the neighborhood here, and you probably remember me from doing the Small Building Community on Woodland Street. So this is kind of the inspiration for this development, is to continue drawing small entrepreneurs out and giving a place to land on a campus where there's a critical mass. So from what we've learned with my experience is that there's significant interest in, in this kind of community. So in terms of the, the, the model and the drawings, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
On the, the pilaster and its inspiration, or, and certainly, I think I'm, you know, I'm driven by that building, but could you talk a little bit about what, maybe your difference between perhaps not imitating that, but playing off of it, I guess artistically, having some artistic license to...
I like artistic license. Basically, our inspiration is, is, well, probably the best way to say it is, just discussing with staff, is that the recommendation was to either go more traditional or to go more modern, and we chose to go more modern, and we felt that the materials that we could apply here would lend itself that way. So my feeling is it would be an interior instead of necessarily masonry, but more of a tile, something that would have a rhythm that would be similar to the, the plaster on the, the, the historic building adjacent to it, and then perhaps a galvanized surround to that, or a steel surround. So it could either carry something that would be a cleaner edge, or perhaps something that had more of an organic feel to it. So kind of an amalgam of those materials, and I felt that with that and then paint and, and the awning carrying it through, it would be a, a good transition from the older building to the more modern, and then up to the, the two-story that would be anchoring that corner. So I felt that theming would, would, would make a nice transition.
And I, that, to hear your description of it, and I think then, it seems to me, in that description and then what's labeled on the drawings, is that, that... and then what's labeled on the drawings, is that that final detail will be worked out and approved by the staff. And to hear your description of it is, certainly doesn't, it sounds like inspired by, not an imitation of using different materials, which sometimes is, not sometimes, most times is really hard to pull off with great success. So we'll certainly trust that, as they have in the past, staff can work through those particular design issues of what will be an important, maybe the more important, street facade of the development.
Question, Brett. Will you be building that?
Actually, our contractor is here, his name's Kerry Fraser, and I will be working with him.
Thank you.
And for the owner, Mark Sanders.
This being a model, the orientation and sort of the entrance to the complex, what were, can you point out?
I can't.
So the orientation?
Well, this is Fatherland Street.
Okay.
And so basically, these would be the entries into the yard. And then also, there would be an entry on the end wall of the end wall pavilion. So it works both ways. What we've learned in East Nashville is we need an energy driver, so something that can kind of create a critical mass of interest, and then it can filter into these businesses.
Okay.
So it helps with stability. But, and also, as you may have seen on the 1108, the small community that I've developed, is that when you drop by, you can actually see down through there, and so everybody has a presence.
Okay. All right.
And just to clarify, those are pedestrian entrances?
Right.
And then the only vehicular is off 11th, isn't that parking area?
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions of applicant? Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Move approval based on staff rec -- I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. So make a recommendation to pass approval per staff recommendation. Here's a second, commissioner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're going to give the applicant just a second to grab the model before we continue, if that's okay.
Good idea.
I like the colors.
1413 Russell Street is also currently a vacant lot. A non-contributing structure on the site was recently demolished, and the commission reviewed plans for infill construction there last month, but since then, the property has been sold or is in the process of being sold to another owner who is choosing to go with a different design. Just to refresh, I guess I didn't put the context there, but the lot is in a low area of Russell Street, where the grade of the site is actually about 12 feet below the street grade, and the vicinity has somewhat compromised historic integrity. There are few historic houses, but most nearby structures are non-contributing or other recent infill. The new proposed structure, the tallest point of the house, is a primary front-to-back ridge at 32 and 1/2 feet above grade. The sides would have these two roof sections that are 2 and 1/2 feet below that primary ridge. It's not quite a cross gable because the ridges don't line up, but you can think of the form of the house that way. And these roofs will all have clipped gables with those, the eve of the clip, the jerking head, at 23 feet above grade. And then those roofs come down to a lower and meet at a lower eve that is 12 feet, 12 and 1/2 feet above grade. So it's somewhere a transition between a one-and-a-half and a two-story house there. The house will be 35 feet, 35 and 1/2 feet wide across its front, and 37 and 1/2 feet going back along the sides. This, and it will match or be consistent with setbacks, front and side setbacks of existing houses in the area. The proposed materials are cement fiber siding, cement fiber shingles, and stucco panels, wood corner boards and trims, split-face block foundation, asphalt shingle roof. These materials are compatible with the surrounding historic structures and meets the material section of the design guidelines. And just to put up, here's a revised front elevation. I'll go ahead and through the staff recommendation and then come back to that drawing. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed infill construction with conditions that the details of final material selections, including roof color, windows, front and rear porch floors, porch railings, and other exterior appurtenances are to be provided and approved by staff, and another condition that the first-story windows on the front elevation shall be at least as tall or taller than the windows on the upper story, and that staff finds that otherwise, the guidelines, the structure meets the guidelines for new construction in Lockland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay, as the drawing indicates. I did get drawings, revisions from the applicant this morning. I've looked at them briefly, but haven't gone through them in very thorough detail, but it looks like many of the conditions, perhaps even all, have been met. Certainly, the appurtenances are shown on the site plan. Here, staff is asked in that condition that the first-story windows match or be as tall as the upper-story windows. It looks like a, you know, I'll just sort of let the drawing speak for itself. I don't know if it's, leave it to the commission to decide if it's met that condition or Or you could, of course, say that we haven't had sufficient time to review the new drawings, but, and just go back with the full two conditions.
Okay. Any discussion answered to Sean?
Sean, to clarify that, what we have in front of us versus what is on screen, this is what's been submitted, right? Is this the new submission?
Yes, I'll go back here up on the screen, and that is the drawings that we received, where typically on a house, historic houses in the neighborhood, the first-story windows are a certain height, and then the second-story windows would not be the taller windows. The emphasis is on the lower floor of a multi-story structure. So staff requested that the, that the lower-story windows be at least as tall or taller. And then the revision that I just got today looks like they, rather than actually enlarging the window itself, they do enlarge the window opening, but the lower half of the window would be a panel.
Actually, it's not a window. It's just, it's not a window.
Yes, yes. It's a different material treatment.
Okay. Okay. And are those the, that's the major change that has come back after you making your recommendation?
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
All right. Any discussion?
And staff, you may be able to clarify, this may just be in the interest of time. It looks like the gable field in the original submission had some additional, it was broken up, some additional detail in it. Is that just a function, is that a change to the drawings, or which one of those are we? In the first drawing, that was shown as being lubed or bent, and I noticed that it's now hardy siding, so I think it's going, I'm not sure if it was, need to be ventilated space, or if it's just going back to a more typical siding treatment there. Yeah, and my, I was actually noticing, or comparing this submission to the photograph of, albeit different, but a similar styled house and breaking up that, you know, that front gable field, but I'm not sure that's it, how critical that is to the overall success of the project. I just was curious as to what exactly was being submitted and what exactly we would be approving. Some clarity there would certainly be helpful.
Well, this item is open for public hearing. I think we have someone that would like to address or may answer some of the questions.
And may I make a suggestion that, since staff really hasn't had time to review the new drawings, that you base your motion on what you've received? And since these are just minor details, we can work out with the applicant at a later date?
Very well.
That's exactly what I was going to say, is that we've got several different versions.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Brett Craig, I'm the builder, owner. We, what we're dealing with is it's two bathrooms in the front, and so we're trying to have a little bit of privacy without having to, the full window all the way down next to the toilets and stuff. But we did, we submitted it without the little trim picture frame underneath it. Sean suggested we might want to try again, so we did submit again another, but I do believe, like she said, that we're getting very close to, I think, working something out against those windows that is satisfactory for everyone.
Then he would ask for a deferral?
No, I would recommend that your motion be made on the drawings that you received.
Oh, okay.
And then we can work out those details.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, that is going to be siding. It never was, it was a, just a mis --
Yeah, the original, this house is based on a house that had, that Bill Johnson had a historical award on Oakland. So we were trying to do a cost-effective version of that. So he, we had to kind of make it a little more cost-effective and remove those livers. Would, in the, and I don't know if this is livers, or I was looking at the picture, and the, I think it's the picture, the one on Oakland, in the gable field, it appears that it further divides that sort of horizontal space into two, you know, there's a band just above the, where the roof intersects that gable field that runs across, piece of trim there, and then there's a vertical that kind of mimics it.
Like up top at the very, at the peak of the gable where those, those trim pieces would continue down.
Yes.
Certainly, that would be an option if that's what you'd like to have.
I'm curious what, which?
I think it would look, now that you mention it, I think it would look better than what it is.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Is someone ready to craft a motion?
I move approval based on the submission package given to staff prior to this meeting. I move approval based on staff recommendations on that package.
All right, Kate, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. 307 West End Place.
All right. 307 West End Place, there is a contributing structure. It is a contributing structure in the overlay. The house is a one-and-a-half-story craftsman. There's currently a non-contributing accessory structure behind the house, just behind the house. That existing non-contributing garage will be demolished and replaced with a new garage at the rear of the lot. The new garage would be 22 feet tall with an 11-foot-above-grade eve line. The footprint of the structure will be 768 square feet, which is less than half the footprint of the house, but larger than staff felt comfortable approving administratively. The structure will have concrete slab foundation, cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof. In the staff recommendation, I mentioned the material of the door was unknown. I've sent, of the pedestrian door on the left of the photograph or drawing on the left there. I've spent, since spoken with the applicant, and they actually said that that door will be omitted, so the material is not an issue. The applicant also said that they're fine with another condition that staff is recommending about the garage, driveway. And then with that, I'll get to that recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the new accessory structure with the conditions, condition that the driveway shall extend to the midpoint of the structure, if not removed entirely. And then with that condition met, staff finds that the proposal otherwise meets the guidelines for new construction of accessory structures in the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Overlay.
You have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, this item is open for public hearing. Is there someone that would like to address the commission? No? All right. Okay. All right, close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions? Motion?
I'll, I'll make a note for the record and then make a motion.
Okay.
As submitted, the driveway is cut at the, it appears to be on the, right at the front face, street face of the front porch. And so I will move approval with staff conditions, with the exception of number two, that the drawing titled "Plot Plan Proposed Attached Garage" be substituted for that condition, ending the drive cut at the front porch.
I have a motion. Questions? Any discussion?
Did I follow that? Is that what you?
Did it continue?
Clarification.
The recommendation is that the driveway continue to the midpoint of the house. Is that? The drawings show it forward of the house, so, you know, less is more. Okay. Okay. That works. I should have said that the applicant was also all right with staff's condition, but that works too.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Other business?
Yes, we do, that's it for business, but we did have one thing we wanted to let you know about, and that's the, that we're, the Metro Historical Commission is now accepting applications for the awards program. The deadline is March 30th, and that's for infill construction, great additions, great rehab. So if you know of any projects, definitely encourage those people to apply. Thank you.
Seeing no other business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.